Good evening. I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on February 6, 2025, beginning at 7:14 PM. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted, and anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or escorted out by security attending the meeting. We do welcome civic input, but insist that we remain respectful and civil. Our first item on the agenda tonight is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join Leila Burnham in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please join us for a moment of silence. This time, I'll turn it over to our Chief Communications Officer, Anita Foster.
Thank you, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. Before we introduce our student performance tonight, I just want to give another shout out to our special student from Dunn Elementary School, Leila, with our Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Now, let me tell you just a little bit about Leila. She's a fifth-grade student, and science is her favorite subject, right? Why did you say "science"? Ah, no, because she likes space. She also likes tacos, just because everyone likes tacos. So, good choice there. And also, she's learning to crochet. So, she's a well-rounded student. We're very proud of one of our Dunn Dragons. Thank you again for doing our pledges. We appreciate you. All right. Yes, out of applause. And now, on to a very special performance that we have in store from you tonight from a few of the members of the Young Junior High Symphonic Band. They're directed by Sarah Pollan. These students volunteered for this opportunity tonight because they love performing and they want to represent Young's amazing fine arts programs. So, tonight, they're going to perform a Latin-inspired piece called "Poco Loco," and they're being conducted by Rafael Nahara. Rafael, I know you're behind the pole, so pop out there and give everybody a... There you go. He's back here, y'all, we promise. Rafael is actually a student at University of Texas at Arlington, a student teacher. So, we're thrilled to have him with us, and we're thrilled to introduce you to our Young Junior High Ensemble. Good job, Ms. Pollan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Young Junior High Band Ensemble. And we'll stay with Ms. Foster for our next item on our agenda, which is our Student of the Month.
Please, yes, absolutely. Please welcome our proud principal for Martin High School, Marlene Roddy, to introduce our Student of the Month.
Good evening, President Chapa, Dr. Smith, and Board of Trustees. I'm excited about introducing Martin's Student of the Month. Martin High School selects Tessa Goodyear for special recognition as the district's February Student of the Month. Tessa describes herself as someone who is dedicated, determined, well-rounded, and adventurous. She is involved in multiple activities at Martin High School, including playing the harp for Martin's Honors Orchestra, being a Martin cheerleader, and being a member of the National Honor Society. She currently is number eight in a class of 889 students, has taken 26 Advanced and AP classes. She was a Davey O'Brien finalist this year, attended their honorary luncheon. Davey O'Brien Foundation recognizes outstanding student athletes for their achievements both on and off the field. Tessa plans to go to a four-year university. Her biomedical pathway in high school links to her pre-med aspirations at college with the goal of eventually being a doctor. She's still undecided about her college plans, but Baylor is a frontrunner. She has two older siblings who attended Baylor, are attending Baylor now, and both of her parents are Baylor alumni. Baylor also has a strong pre-med program, which is appealing to her, but she's also considering other universities, Pepperdine and University of Florida. Tessa says that because she has so many interests from academics, music, athleticism, and volunteer work, that her biggest challenge in high school was time management. Listening to all the activities she completes weekly, she clearly is a person who has adhered to her time-management goals successfully. Tessa hikes for fun, and her family takes a family hiking trip every summer. She scaled Mount Columbia in Colorado with her church and indicates that is a "four-teen-er," which I didn't know what that meant, but she told me, which is a peak of over 14,000 feet. She has visited over 40 national parks due to her keen interest in hiking. She is also dedicated in the community to service and volunteers every Saturday at John Peter Smith Hospital. She serves as a big sister in her youth group as a family leader at her church. She is a board member of the Youth Leadership of Arlington and the Mayor's Youth Commission. Tessa indicates she loves to read, she is curious about the world, and that she is open to new adventures. She's the third child in her family. She will introduce her guests and family that she has brought with her this evening. Congratulations to Tessa Goodyear.
Good evening, President Chapa, Dr. Smith, and Board members. Thank you all for your service to the district and support of our public schools. I am so thankful for this honor to be named Student of the Month. Thank you to my principal, Mrs. Roddy, and my counselor, Mrs. Lewis, for your continuous support and encouragement throughout my years at Martin. I am so thankful to have my family here supporting me. I actually will be a third-generation AISD graduate. Both my parents, my grandmother, and most of my aunts and uncles are AISD grads. My two older siblings graduated from Martin, and my two younger siblings will in the next few years, so we really love AISD. I want to especially thank my parents, my mom for her wisdom and advice in my education and life, and my dad for the late-night help studying for a test. I wouldn't be where I am today without both of your guidance and loving support. I'm thankful to all my teachers from Wood, Bowles, and Martin who have pushed me academically and allowed me to ask question after question, and I really do ask a lot of them. I have been provided so many opportunities to be involved in such a wide variety of curricular and extracurricular activities, from field days to talent shows to junior high sports to Friday Night Lights to CTC classes to playing my harp at the CVPA. I have been given countless areas to explore and grow in throughout my years in AISD. I'm especially grateful for the belief that my orchestra directors, Mrs. O'Vallier and Mr. Branch have had in me. When I was in sixth grade, I was provided the opportunity to play with the Martin High School Symphony Orchestra at the TMEA convention. Their belief that I was able to play well with their award-winning orchestra inspired me to believe in myself as a harpist and gave me the confidence in all areas of academic. Playing the harp in the Martin Symphony has been one of the most rewarding experiences of my high school education. I'm thankful that AISD allows its students to pursue multiple different interests, so I was able to not only play the harp, but also be a Martin varsity cheerleader, be involved in different clubs, and pursue unique classes like my biomedical pathway. These classes have helped inspire my love of medicine and are a big reason I hope to be a doctor in the future. The ability to take classes at the CTC has been such a cool experience, and I have grown significantly through them. While I'm still deciding where I will attend college next year, I'm excited to pursue a pre-med path so I can combine my love of science and helping others. Thank you again for this honor, and thank you, AISD, for allowing me to be curious, for encouraging me to explore a variety of interests, and for supporting me every step of the way. This district and its teachers, administrators, and students have truly helped shape me into the person I am today. Thank you.
Tessa, congratulations on all that you've accomplished, and we all know that you're going to do in the future. For every Student of the Month, we do have a little token of recognition that the board and Dr. Smith like to give to the Student of the Month, and so they'll come down now. And I'd ask that Ms. Haynes join in tonight as well.
It is, the music got real. Yeah. You did great.
So, first of all, I don't know, have you been to Pepperdine yet?
Yes.
I was gonna say, that's gonna be a really... Like, I'm a Baylor fan, but Pepperdine's got a pretty nice view right there, so good luck, family, on choosing that one. We are extremely proud of you, and we're thankful for what you have put into Arlington ISD as well. One of the things that stands out to me about our students in Arlington ISD, and you're a perfect example of this, is how much you care about the community as well. And the fact that you're thanking your teachers from your elementary school and your junior high school, and that you're focused on asking good questions, gives us a lot of confidence in the future. So, thank you for what you've done for Arlington ISD as well. We are extremely proud of you. We can't wait to see how you change the world. We're gonna be your biggest fan, and you've always got a home here as well. So, Tessa, congratulations, and thank you for representing us so well.
I thought you were taking a picture. Oh, okay.
I would just get her so we can see her.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, so I think Ms. Roddy did an amazing job highlighting your academic achievements. There's no doubt that you are a committed and dedicated student. What I wanted to commend you on is the human being that you are. I think that you are a quiet but very wise leader. You are thoughtful in all you do, and above all else, you're a loyal friend. So, she's my daughter's best friend, so I'm about to cry over this, but I think that you are just a one-of-a-kind human being, and everyone needs a Tessa in their life. So...
Now we can... Yeah. She was supposed to give that to her. Great. Family, you wanna come up?
Sure.
Yeah, come on up real quick. Yeah. I'll stand in back here. Yeah, come on up, everybody. All right, please, she gets lost, they're right pointing her. All right, here we go, guys. And one, two.
Okay, we'll move on to our next recognition tonight. We have our National Board Certification Recognition, and I will turn it over to Dr. Wertz.
All right, good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. It's an honor to be here this evening to recognize a remarkable group of educators who have earned the prestigious National Board Certification for Teachers. This achievement represents the highest standard in the teaching profession and requires a level of dedication and excellence that very few attain. The National Board Certification process is rigorous, involves a comprehensive assessment of both the teacher's skills and their practices, and to earn this certification, teachers must meet several key requirements, including demonstrating strong classroom experience. There's an assessment of their practice through a series of portfolio entries that includes student work samples, video recordings of their teachings, and reflective essays. Teachers must also demonstrate their expertise in their specific subject area by taking a series of exams that assess their knowledge of both content and pedagogy, ensuring that they are not only masters of their subject but also effective in their teaching methods. And finally, they must model growth and reflection by considering their personal teaching practices, identifying areas for improvement, and setting goals for professional growth. National Board Certification is not just a certification, it's a lifelong commitment to excellence. For teachers, it leads to continuous improvement and a greater sense of fulfillment in their profession, and it also opens doors to leadership roles and opportunities for collaboration with peers. For students, the benefits are profound. Research shows that students taught by National Board Certified teachers achieve higher academic outcomes, demonstrate greater critical thinking skills, and are more likely to develop lifelong love of learning. These teachers are committed to creating engaging, personalized learning experiences that help every student reach their full potential. And finally, for our district, having National Board Certified teachers elevates the entire educational community. It reinforces our commitment to providing the best possible education for every student and encourages a culture of excellence and professional growth. These teachers serve as models, mentors for their colleagues, and help raise the standard of education across all of our schools. So, please join me in congratulating Tiffany Webb. She's from McNutt Elementary, and she earned her certification in literacy, reading language arts in early and middle childhood. Next, we have Gordon Stevens from Lamar High School. He earned his certification in mathematics in adolescents and young adult. And finally, Nathan Hervey from Arlington High School. He earned his certification in music, early adolescents through young adult certification. So, congratulations to all of you. We are very, very proud, and thank you for your contributions to education, your hard work, and your commitment to learning for yourself, and what it brings to your classrooms is really inspiring, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz, and congratulations. And we always say that we have some of the best folks here, and this is just another example of that. We do have two appointments before we'll take a brief recess for all of us to celebrate together, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
And I'm gonna welcome up Ms. Darla Moss, I believe, or maybe I'm not. She just gave me a different look, so we're gonna do this a little different, I think. Tonight, I would like to welcome our recommendation for the Assistant Superintendent of Financial Services, Mr. Noberto Rivas, and our Assistant Principal for Arlington College and Career High School, Juan Espinoza, and our Assistant Principal for Swift Elementary, Kesha Harry.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative appointments?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Ms. Fowler. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Have a second for Mr. Wilbanks. Please vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion unanimously carries. Dr. Smith, congratulations to our administrative appointees.
What I would like to do now, since I messed that up all, obviously, I'd like to invite them on up. Please welcome our newest employees in Arlington ISD in the administrative ranks, Noberto, Juan, and Kesha. Come on up to the front, if you would, please. You can, you're more than welcome to speak first.
Good evening, Board President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. I stand before you tonight with much gratitude for entrusting me to, with this position, to help your superintendent and the CFO and their teams with your district's finances. It's nerve-wracking. I've worked at my district for 12 years now, so it's nerve-wracking to leave the financial environment that I know to come to a different place, but it is exciting. It's a new journey. I met Dr. Hill at Friesland in San Luis Obispo, and about a couple months later, I met Ms. Moss at Friesland in Terrell on the last day, on the last session. And on that plane flight, I was reading a book about taking a journey, and I read a chapter about taking a journey into the unknown. At Terrell, we visited an indoor facility, an indoor practice facility, and I asked the tour guides what would they have done differently after the building had been built. And they answered, and as we were leaving, there was this high school senior who was in, who was there. He actually came up to me, tapped me on the back, and he said, "Excuse me, sir. Since you asked, this is what I would have done differently." So, kudos to that College bound senior, kudos to his educators, kudos to his family support system, because he didn't have to come up to me, yet he did. He came up to me to give me his opinion. So, here I am, I'm taking, taking a chance. I'm uprooting my family from an unknown place. My beautiful wife is back there with our youngest daughter. So, thank her for coming to this journey for me, to this team of eight, to the staff, and to the community of Arlington. I will work to help build on the successes and foundations already in place and never lose sight of our students, right? Because that's the reason why we're all here. We're here because of them. I am also a product of public education, so I believe in that. Let's be their spark, let's help them light their way so they can, and let's continue to improve their, let's continue to help improve their experience. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to working with everybody.
To President Chapa, the members of the board, and Dr. Smith, thank you for the opportunity to return to Arlington ISD, a place I call home. I am committed to upholding the values and standards that make Swift Elementary a premier campus. This is not just a job for me, it's truly a calling, and I am grateful for the opportunity to serve the wonderful Swift community again. Thank you, Dr. Buell, Mr. Topazar, and Mr. Lopez, for this amazing, amazing opportunity. Mr. Lopez, I'm happy to serve with you again. To the teachers and staff, to the students, I vow to support you because your growth and success are my top priorities. To the parents, families, and community, thank you for your partnership. I am excited to work with each of you to create a learning environment where all students can achieve their full potential. Finally, I want to thank my loving husband, Mark, who's here with me. My heart beats, my son and my daughter who are away at school, and family and friends near and far for their constant encouragement and support. This journey would not be possible without you, and I am beyond blessed. As I step into this role, I do with a deep sense of responsibility, excitement, and commitment. Together, let's continue to build a school culture that is inspiring and impactful, one where every student can learn, grow, and succeed. Thank you so much.
Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. I just want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to serve as an Assistant Principal at Arlington College and Career. I strongly believe that the role aligns with my passion for education, for leadership, and for student success. I want to thank my wife and my two sons, who've been my greatest supporters throughout my career. Their encouragement, their patience, I repeat, their patience, and their belief in me has fueled me to, you know, to commit to making a difference. I also want to thank Ms. Marlene Roddy and all the administrators at Martin High School that gave me my first opportunity as an administrator. I take with me all the knowledge, the skill, and the experience that I hope to bring to Arlington College and Career and contribute to that campus. Thank you.
All right, congratulations to our administrative appointees. It's 7:40. We'll take a brief recess so we can all celebrate together for a few minutes, and we'll see trustees back down here. Let's shoot for 10 minutes. All right, we're gonna come back from recess at 7:53. We do not have any speakers on our open forum for agenda items tonight, so we will move on. I am going to switch up, in recognition of the fact we have quite a few guests here tonight, I'm gonna switch up the agenda a little bit. We'll start with our reports. Our first report is "The Leader in Me," and I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, President Chapa. Dr. Buell's on her way up here, and we're excited to present to our Board of Trustees tonight some outstanding work that's happening throughout our school district. And you can see by some of the amazing educators that we have in the room tonight, we got some of the best and brightest in the state, helping us lead great work for the climate, culture, and focus of our campuses.
Thank you, President Chapa, Dr. Smith, members of the board. I am super excited. In fact, this is a highlight of my week, to be able to celebrate the great work that 12 of our campuses are doing with their implementation of "The Leader in Me." The purpose tonight is to provide an update regarding the "Leader in Me" implementation in Arlington, and I'd like to start by just recognizing the 12 campuses that are currently implementing "The Leader in Me." We have Blanton, Thornton, Ellis, Peach, Sheridan, Spear, Larson, Goodman, and Pope Elementarys, Workman and Carter Junior Highs, and Sam Houston High School. We do want to celebrate their work. And the best part of this presentation is you're gonna get to hear directly from then in just a few minutes. So, "The Leader in Me" is a whole-school transformation process that teaches the 21st leadership, 21st-century leadership skills and life skills to our students, and creates that culture of student empowerment based on the idea that every one of our students can be a leader. And we know we value that in AISD. We know that the social-emotional development of our students is equally as important as the academic achievement for them, and that's what this program helps us to support. It's in alignment with the effective schools framework and also with our board priorities of academic growth, positive school culture, and a safe and productive learning environment. So, the "Leader in Me" framework is for students in pre-K through 12, and you can see, we're implementing it at our elementaries, our junior highs, and our high schools, and it aims to develop the leadership skills, trust, and academic success. It's based on the idea that everyone is a leader, and it provides our schools with professional development and resources to help our students and staff develop leadership and life skills, build trust, and improve academic performance. And these are just a few of the highlights of the program. It also leans into the student leadership portrait. It starts with the inner. It starts with the inner and working on our students' understanding how to lead theirselves, their personal effectiveness, and then it moves into how do they lead others and their interpersonal effectiveness, all helping them to be a stronger leader. We're in year one of implementation. This is a two-year grant that we launched at the beginning of this year, and so this year is our first year of implementation. You can see the red on the chart is year one, and I'm happy to report that all of our campuses are on target with meeting all of their year-one objectives, and we'll hear from some of them in just a minute. And then also, Phase Two will be implemented for most of our campuses as we begin the second year in August. So at campus-level implementation, we have two campuses that I want to highlight. One is Sam Houston, and the other is Goodman, and Goodman can't be here tonight, but we are gonna be able to hear from Sam Houston in a few minutes. But all of our leaders in the lighthouse team, they've been trained in the Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, and that's one of the first things you do as you're launching implementation. All campus lighthouse teams have been trained on how to lead, launch, and support the Leader in Me initiative, and I think that's one of the, one of the things I really want to highlight about this, is it's not a program that everyone implements. It's not cookie cutter. It's about empowering the staff to really think about the unique needs of a campus and then aligning implementation to meet the needs of the students and the community that it serves. All of our campuses have engaged in the Seven Habits training with their staff, and that's being led by their lighthouse team. And so we train a lighthouse team to actually lead that implementation, and these are the teachers and the staff at the campus level, and also to develop their own unique action plan. So the lighthouse action plans at all of our campuses will be launched this spring, and we've already started that work. Again, Leader in Me has an elementary, and middle school, and a high school component. For elementary, it's about educating the whole child, and middle school is about addressing those social-emotional needs that we know are ever-important during the middle years. And then for high school, the college, career, and life-readingness. So again, really nice alignment with our own priorities within AISD. I'd like to call up now two of our great Leader in Me principals. I'd like to call up Elena Lopez from Carter Junior High and Juan Villarreal from Sam Houston High School, let them share with you about the impact of this programming on their campus.
He said ladies first. Good evening. So in 2016, I had the opportunity to attend a Leader in Me conference. I was able to visit different schools, see this work in action, and I was just overwhelmed and impressed with all of the good work that was happening at those campuses. At that time, there were some budget constraints at my campus, so I was not able to implement it, but I did buy a book, and so I took pieces of that book and implemented what I could in the way of culture and building leadership capacity, and so it really did make a difference on my campus. So, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to really take part in this work. It's been incredible. We've just started, we're at beginning stages of implementation, but I have an amazing group of educators leading this work. We have rising student leaders that are taking part in that work. We've completed two full days of training for our lighthouse team. We've also trained our entire staff on the Seven Habits. I want to thank the partners, district support partners, Dr. Jarco and Steve Simpson, who have been in the work with us. So we are doing some amazing things. We have some amazing celebrations. We have just improved student behavior. We are building on that through this framework. We are continuing the work that we've started and enhancing different pieces. We've identified staff to support different pieces of the framework with culture, with leadership, with academics. So we are just ignited on fire about what our next steps are. It's perfect timing as we move into and transition into our new building, just the pieces that we're gonna take with us are just, it's just a great work that we're doing. So, go Rattlers! We're very excited about our new building and bringing Leader in Me into the house.
All righty. Now it's my turn. First of all, I do want to thank you, Dr. Buell, for giving me an opportunity to give you a glimpse of what's going on at Sam Houston High School with the initiative Leader in Me. Last fall, we established a train and trained our lighthouse team, which was crucial in setting the foundation for our school-wide training in January. The feedback from our staff was highly positive, and I could sense the excitement that everybody had in implementing the Seven Habits, but we, the teachers, really wanted to involve our students, and so that's what we are doing. Just a few weeks ago, they, our English I and English II PLCs collaborated on a unique lesson guided by Mr. Drury, our district English specialist. What made this lesson truly remarkable was the approach. Our English I teachers sat in small groups with English II students, learning alongside as they engaged with guided text and reading strategies. Several instructional leaders were present to witness this powerful learning in action, including our secondary director, Dr. Jarco. The level of participation was incredibly high, and the experience was transformational for both students and teachers. This innovative idea came from our leaders, our English-level leaders, Brittany Smith and Alan Day, and it was a true win-win for everyone involved. Moving forward, we want to continue embedding the Seven Habits into our culture by adding our core values, implementing the Seven Habits in our core values. We also want to establish a lighthouse team for students in training our students this summer in the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens at the Teens Leadership Institute. I'm excited to see the impact of this work, not just within our student body, but also as we expand leadership opportunities through our district SLAB students. I want to thank you for this time and support, and I look forward to sharing more with you. Thank you.
I told you that would be a highlight. Thank you all very much for coming up and sharing with us. So just a little bit about our implementation, and I think it's been one of the most powerful pieces of it, is that this really is about training the lighthouse team at the campus level to be able to lead this work in a way that meets the needs of that school community. In Arlington, we have a district capacity team, which are, it's a cross-representation of different departments across the district that learn and help to guide implementation and make sure that we're supporting it from the district level. But the best part of it is that we are embedded into lighthouse teams at the campus. For instance, I serve with the Ellis Lighthouse Team, and so each one of us goes out in a role of support and to help, we're thinking two years down the road, and how do we sustain this work? And so we think that it's really important to align the district with the campuses on this work. And we even included, I have to give a shout-out to our SLAB president because she attended with the district cadre all of the Seven Habits training and really helped us to think about what this could mean for the student learning experience. So shout-out to her. So we have two other principals I'd like to call up for brief reflections. We have Karen Hicks, the principal of Sheridan, and also Ayesha Ramos, the principal at Peach Elementary.
I was ready to play rock-paper-scissors with you, Ms. Hicks. All right. Good evening. My name is Ayesha Ramos, and I am the proud principal at Eddie and Debbie Peach Elementary. Thank you to my executive director, Dr. Lee, and Ms. Patty Bustamante, our district support person, as well as my teammates from Peach that are here supporting tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and share about our remarkable journey at Peach Elementary and the impacts of Leader in Me on our school community. From the outside looking in, some may see statistics and labels. A campus with high economic disadvantage, achievement gaps still rebounding from the effects of COVID. A school located in a zip code often associated with challenges, high mobility rate, diverse living arrangements and families in transitions, and the largest elementary enrollment in Arlington ISD. But what they may not immediately see is the heartbeat of our school, the leadership, resilience, and dedication that define our students and staff. What they may not realize is that our students are leaders. They have been featured in district professional development videos, raise $1,500 annually through our Pennies for Peach coin drive benefiting the Eddie Peach Scholarship. They collect up to 4,000 cans for Mission Arlington every year. They help with PBIS incentives, principal and dean's awards around our school, participate in leadership and mentoring clubs like Safety Patrol, Student Council, Young Student Mentors, Choir, Cheer, Step, Basketball Running Club, and Yearbook. And perhaps most importantly, they have discovered a sense of belonging, their leadership voice, and a spirit of advocacy that extends beyond our campus walls. Our students are not just participants in their education, they are active participants and contributors. They patrol the hallways in the mornings, they decorate our school, serve as ushers and host at parent events, lead school pep rallies, make morning announcements, mentor their peers, they organize community service projects, engage in grade-level performance goal-setting, collaborate in town hall meetings to problem-solve issues on our campus. And none of this happens by accident. It happens by the unwavering belief and intentional coaching of our Peach staff and, of course, our most influential partners, our parents. Since our school opened nine years ago, every staff member who joined our mission has embraced the mindset that culture is our secret sauce. It's one built on relationships, traditions, celebrations, and shared ownership. It elevates everything we do. So through Leader in Me and the Seven Habits, our staff is not only modeling and refining personal leadership in our own work-life balance, but they're also embedding these habits into daily instruction and student opportunities. While we're still in the early stages of implementation, our lighthouse team and teachers have embraced this work, and we are already seeing the impact. By focusing on individual strengths, we're thinking win-win and discovering innovative solutions, or finding the third way, that are moving our campus forward. Academic, behavioral, and qualitative survey data trends are rising, and we are energized and Peach proud about what's ahead. But tonight isn't just about the data, it's about the people who make this happen every day. Our dedicated staff deserves recognition, not just tonight, but every day, for their passion, their commitment, and their willingness to lead by example. We are committed to supporting them and ensuring they have the balance and resources to sharpen that saw so they can be the best leaders for our students. And most importantly, our students deserve every opportunity we can provide. Where some might see barriers or opportunity gaps, we see opportunities, we see possibilities. We will never stop synergizing with our staff, partnering with families, the community, and most importantly, our students themselves, to prove that they can achieve their goals, they will receive the support they need, and they will always have their Peach family and their own families cheering them on at every milestone. Thank you for your time this evening and for allowing me to share just a glimpse of the incredible work that's happening at Peach. We invite you to visit us, come see firsthand that leadership in action, the learning and the love that make our students, staff, and families #PeachProud.
Well, hello, everyone. We are elated to be here tonight, and to show you how elated we are to be here, my lighthouse team is here and a portion of my instructional leadership team, and I would be remiss if I didn't have them to stand up. And my instructional leadership team in the back. Thank you. I am proud to serve at Sheridan Elementary, and as you can see, these people are on fire, and they're here tonight so that we can share with you what the good work that we're doing here at Sheridan Elementary. In 2011, I was a Leader in Me teacher, and I saw the impact of what Leader in Me did at my campus. We were a low-performing school. We were a school that was almost where TA had to come in, and in one year, we turned that school around because we implemented with fidelity Leader in Me. The Seven Habits, the kids totally immersed in those Seven Habits. They lived, ate, and breathed them, and I saw what it did for that school, and I know that this is going to take Sheridan to the next level. It is going to get us where we need to be with culture, it is gonna get us where we need to be in leadership, it is gonna get us where we need to be in academics. I totally believe in this program. I've seen what it can do, and I'm elated on being a Leader in Me school. My staff is on fire. They are, I would like for my designer of the T-shirt to stand up. This is our Lighthouse Team T-shirt. And the work that we're doing on our campus is bar to nothing. We are doing a fantastic job, and I am proud to grow this group of people. AISD is about growing people, and you said it best in our ILA in our meeting the other day, in our principals' meeting, about how we need to grow our people. And so this is an opportunity for unlikely people that have been in leadership roles before, for me to be able to grow them in a capacity. Dr. Buell talked about the sustainability of this program, and we want to make sure that we put people in place, that even after I'm well-gone and retired, that this can go on and live on. So thank you for your time today, and I want to leave you with our motto. We are teachers. We are life changers, and together we are?
We are strong!
Thank you so much.
That's hard to follow and get back up. Thank you all, and I'm very proud of the work that you're doing. I would like to just have everyone that is associated with one of our Leader in Me campuses, I know we have a lot here, principals, teachers, y'all are what's making it happen, so would y'all all please stand and let us recognize you? Thank you all, and I also want to recognize, is Jared still there? Jared Zahn, who has been instrumental in helping to support the implementation of this. And then two other people that I'd like to recognize is Andrea Crafton and Dr. Dana West, our two liaisons from The Leader in Me. And Dana serves as a coach for each of our schools, and I know the principals appreciate that one-on-one support that they're getting. So key to what we're doing is putting in place a support system to make sure that this is more than something that we're just doing, but that it truly becomes part of our culture and the way we do our work. So I'm thankful for the district capacity team partnering with our campuses to really wrap that support around and allow our campuses to have a positive experience with this. Two things that we have on our radar for this spring, one is the measurable results assessment that we will give, because we always value that input, that feedback, and just the monitoring of, is this making a difference, and how do we know? So we will be engaging in that in the spring, and we'll be able to bring that information back in a future report. And then the other is monitoring our campus action plans that we have. Those are all housed on a dashboard. There are more resources than we could ever tap into on the platform, and one of those is our campus action plan, and that really helps us to all be on the same page about how we can best support our campuses with implementation. So some of our next steps are the continued coaching that our campuses receive, the training and support that they are provided, and then our new teacher and administrative training this summer, and then our continued work on just aligning the leadership language across the district as we work with our principals. We've focused on the four disciplines of execution as part of our work this spring, and we'll continue to align the training that we're providing. So with that, we'll open it up to any questions that you might have. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was stuck, so I was gonna phase. Can I do one quick commercial? We have a discovery day. Arlington was selected to host the discovery day, and we're really excited about that. The Leader in Me will actually be putting it on, but we're hosting it, so we will get to spotlight some of our campuses across the district, and our talented students will be there as well. So I wanted to leave this with you. So I wanted to leave this with you and invite you to come out that day if your schedule allows and join us. I think there's, we'll have people all the way from Oklahoma that will be here seeing the great work that's happening in Arlington, Texas. So pretty proud of that. Now, discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Buell. Trustees, do we have questions, comments? Ms. Haynes?
So I just had a quick question. I don't know if I missed it, I could have. Did you mention how the lighthouse teams are selected? Do the individuals volunteer? Do they go through some pre-screener or how do you find these awesome people?
Yeah. So we went through our initial training. So initially, a principal plus one was trained so they could learn about what is Leader and Me? And then go back and think about on their campus, who can help to champion that work and help to move it forward? So it looks a little bit different probably on every campus as to how they narrow that down. But our principals and their plus one essentially go back and put this team together. I've heard some where they're volunteers, others where they maybe, you know, nudge, hey, be a great person for this. But ultimately, it's one of the most powerful pieces because the lighthouse team, once they receive the training, is really that guiding coalition that pitches the work forward on the campus. So a lot of different ways.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Any other comments or questions from trustees? All right, seeing none, thank you, Dr. Buell.
Thank you all again. Appreciate it.
Okay, we will, at this time, we'll move on to our, we'll go back to our public hearing on our Texas Academic Performance Report. Turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, President Chapa. Dr. Natalie Lopez is on her way up. I don't know why the mass exodus right now, I don't understand. We want to thank our teachers and everyone for being here this evening, appreciate your time. Dr. Lopez is going to take the reins as we talk about our Texas Academic Performance Report for 2023-24. As you know, this is a required presentation that we have every year and to hold a public hearing on this. And so I'll turn it over to Natalie.
President Chapa, members of the board and Dr. Smith, thank you for the time. Yes, I'm reporting out the 2023-24 Texas Academic Performance Report for this public hearing. And the purpose is to provide insights into the 2023-24 TAPER and then hold the required public hearing for the release of the document from the state. The TAPER has an abundance of data elements included, so I'm not going to go through all of that. We received one for the district and for each of our campuses. So I'm just going to stay high level and just kind of talk about some of our aggregate results and then move through the presentation for just some of the data points. So we'll start with star performance and participation. For participation, that's the easiest one. We, in AISD, reach 99% participation for our star assessments. That aligns with the state and the region, they both also hit 99%. So that's fantastic. We want, the goal is to get all of our students assessed each year. And so we were able to do that. So I'll move into star performance and I'm going to stay at the approaches grade level or above as that performance level includes any students that passed the star test, whether it's at the approaches, meets or master's grade level. I'm not going to report out on each of those by themselves. So approaches grade level or above for all of the different subjects. So I'll start with the all subjects, approaches, grade level and above. And so in our 2024 tests for all subjects, we were at 67%, down slightly from 2023 by two percentage points. And kind of down across the student groups, sped held strong and stayed at what they did in 2023. And so that's good news. Our performance aligns with the state. The state dropped by 1% and across the all subjects and the region also dropped by 2%. So we're kind of right in alignment with that trend. I'll now move into each subject on its own. So reading, approaches, grade level or above, we were at 67% and that is also down 2% from what we did in 2023. And some, you know, pretty much just slight decreases across our student groups, except for, with the exception of sped, they held strong to what they did in 2023. And for reading, the state decreased by one also and the region decreased by two. So kind of mirroring their trend. For reading and for math, we have annual growth. So that's expected growth for students as they go from one year of school into the next year. So I'm going to report out on annual growth first. And so we had 61% of our students reach their growth point on the star reading test in 2024. And that was up 6% from what we did in 2023 when we were at 55%. So you can see that there's increases across all of our student groups. The state grew 4%, the region grew 5% and so we exceeded that just slightly by increasing to, increasing from our own 2023 value by 6%. And then the other piece of growth is accelerated learning. So that's just a subset of growth where we look at just the percentage of kids that were did not meets grade level the prior year and then how did they perform the current year? So we would like to see them accelerate out of did not meet to approaching or meeting or mastering grade level expectations next year. And so in 2024, we had 26% of our students reach their accelerated growth goal. And that's down slightly, 3% from what it was in 2023. The state was down five and the region was down six. So our 3% drop wasn't as drastic as the state or the region. I'll move now into math. And again, approaches, grade level or above. And so we were at 65% for our all student group. That's down 3% from what we did in 2023. And that's kind of predominantly down for the student groups with the exception of a few, our Pacific Islander or two of our races either grew or held steady. And then for that aligns with the state, they dropped three and the region also dropped three. For math, that subject also has annual growth and accelerated learning. Our annual growth for math was 57% in 2024 and that was a 5% drop from what it was in The state dropped six, the region dropped six and we dropped five. So again, still in alignment with those state and regional trends. For accelerated learning, we were at 31% and that's down 5% from what we did in 2023. State was also down five and the region was also down six. So in alignment there. For science, for approaches, grade level or above, we were at 67% and that's down 2% from what we did in 2023. We were at 69. We did have, I mean, our sped students are either maintaining or growing in all of the subjects while the all student groups and other groups are decreasing. So there is a nice little success story there. And science for the state also was down 2% and for the region was down two. And then social studies, approaches, grade level or above, we were up 73%, up 1% from 2023. And then, you know, gains across the student groups in our social studies category and exceeded the state there because they didn't have any growth and the region also didn't have any growth. So it's kind of nice to outperform them, even if it's slight. I'll now move into college career and military readiness. Some of the data points for the 2023-24 TAPER are a year behind. And so CCMR, College Career Military Readiness, is one of those data points. Attendance, dropout, graduation, those things are a year behind in the same way that they go a year behind into the accountability system. And so this cohort is 2023 and that's what is the most recent cohort for the 2024 TAPER. And you can see the growth of our 2023 class in their acquisition of their CCMR point. We had 80.9% of our graduates earn a CCMR point. So, and that's up over 13% from what we did in 2022. And that, our growth there is actually more than double what the state did in their own growth. And then we exceeded what the state did and also the region. So we outperformed them and we outgrew what they did from 23 to 24. So that's great news. I'll now move into our district discipline data. And we're required to report out the violent or criminal incident rates, the percentage of those out of our total disciplinary rates. So the data here shows the 23 and 24. So what you kind of notice is predominantly, these things are similar to what they were in 2023, with the exception, fighting has grown by, it grew 1%. That's the largest increase. The rest either maintained, some of them decreased by, you know, just tenths of a percent. There is something I would like to point out, because I said mostly everything stayed the same, but you're probably wondering about that second, that third column related to the controlled substances. Looks like those had a pretty significant drop from 2.7 to 0.3 and then 2 to 0.5 for the second and the third columns respectively. However, the data capture was different in 2024. So it looks like there's a drop there. Just wanted to be transparent, the data collection changed for PMS and so it stopped in September of '23. So that, the orange pieces there in that second, third column are not reflective of the entire year. So I don't want to spend too much time on that thinking, hey, we decreased our controlled substance. The data changed, report out next year differently and it'll be actually comparable one year to the next. I'll now move into our AISD graduate performance in Texas higher education. So we like to look at what percentage of our students enroll in a higher ed institution after they leave us and then how are they performing after they leave us in that first year in higher ed? Unfortunately, we don't have data for all of the colleges through this data source, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. So we're only reporting out those students that went to a Texas higher education institution. However, we have students that go out of state and you'll see that they are, you'll see that reflected in the data. So the seven high schools that had graduates that went on to higher ed are shown here. And this is our graduating class of 2022. So now we're going two years back. CCMR was 2023, this is 2022 because we get the data after their 2023 school year and it is then reported on the TAPER for 2024. So we're going a little bit back in time here, but it's, we're reporting out nonetheless because it is a requirement. So you see our seven high schools represented here and then their values for their students that go to the different types of institutions on the rows. So we have our four-year public university counts, we have our two-year public university counts, then independent colleges and universities. And then those last two rows are not trackable or not found. Those students might have gone out of state and so their data is not available through the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. So you can see the array of the counts for our different high schools and then the types of institutions that they're pursuing if they do pursue college after they leave us. And again, we don't just look at where they go, but another data point that they give us is how are they performing once they leave us and they enroll in a post-secondary institution? We obviously cannot control behaviors or lifestyles of students once they, well, even when they are in AISD, but certainly once they're out of AISD and into the next phase of life. So we report out their first year GPA and then that's, that data point, that's where we stop is after that first year. So you can see for those same seven Arlington high schools, we have their two-year public college GPAs in the categories. So less than two, 2 to 2.49, 2.5 to 2.99. So the distribution of their scores across the GPAs that are possible for two-year schools and then the four-year public universities. Data for Arlington Collegiate was not available for two-year public colleges because it was not available in the data. And then these are the links. Again, there is an abundance of data that is available and that we make available on our website. And so we have our TAPER data, our financial data, the discipline data that we discussed and then that graduate Texas Higher Educating Coordinating Board data. And so the links are here. We'll post these on our AISD website and that moves us into the discussion section for this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. So there, trustees with comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on our Texas Academic Performance Report. Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Thank you.
We'll now move back down to the next item in our agenda, which is the Project Search Report. And I believe I'll be turning it over to Dr. Wertz.
Or me. Yeah. Dr. Wertz can talk about it too, but I'm excited to welcome Patty Bustamante up tonight and team to talk about an amazing opportunity that we have started this year in Arlington ISD in a partnership with Project Search.
Hi, good evening. Patty Bustamante here. I'm not Cindy Brown, that says Cindy Brown, so that's not me. She's not able to be here with us and so we did not want to miss on this opportunity to give you this amazing update that we have. I have lifelines with me in case I need help. I have Brenda Cups, who is our special ed coordinator, who has the honor of supervising Project Search. And we have our amazing Caroline Peterson. She is our 18-plus Project Search teacher. So here we go. So tonight, we're here to share an overview of the Project Search and its impact on students in Arlington ISD. Look at those happy faces. I mean, they are so, so happy. What is Project Search? Well, Project Search is a total workforce immersion experience and it is a program that facilitates a combination of classroom instruction, hands-on training and career exploration, all of it at the workplace. And so in this case, that works site is Arlington Memorial. We have three internship rotations that last 10 weeks. So these friends get to experience different rotations all over the hospital in different areas. And so they receive training and they are so excited to be there. As part of Project Search, we have an employment skills curriculum that Ms. Peterson works with them at the classroom. So the first part of the day, they have lessons and they learn different things. They also work on traveling training. They learn how to use the handy train, on-demand, via, they have their little app, they call for their ride to come from the house to the hospital and back. And they are so proud to tell you all about it. All of this is at Arlington Memorial and we have, the district provides a teacher, Caroline is there. We also provide a coach, a job coach. And Quest, our partner in this program, also provides, the third person there is a job coach that is provided by Quest. We have partners, you can see their pictures down there. We wouldn't be able to do Project Search without the support of our partners. And so it's going great. Some of the examples of what they do, they are all over the hospital. There are seven of them, but they're everywhere. They can do food and nutrition, they prepare trays, they work in housekeeping, they do lots of stocking, separating and sorting, they transport patients, they work in the lab. I was there with Cindy a couple of weeks ago and Caroline was giving us a tour and she's like, look, there's one right there, they opened the door, you can see, but you can't go there. I was like, okay, that's fine. And they are very, very proud. Everyone knows them, everyone knows them at the hospital. Some of the employment outcomes that this partnership creates, you can see the numbers. What we work here on is we want these seven interns to be placed in a job. Hopefully, it's at Arlington Memorial so that they are familiar, but if it doesn't happen after their graduation at the program, Quest continues to work with them to make sure that they get a job. The students that participate, the interns that participate, the goal here is getting them a job so they apply for this, for this opportunity. If that's not what they want to do, this is not the program for them. But it's pretty impressive, the statistics that Quest provides in terms of Project Search. So we are really, 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 really looking forward to what these seven students are going to do by the end of this year. They are finishing their second rotation and so now it's when they can really start looking for a job. So it's not just about working, they also do some social, social activities. It's not just about getting them employed, it's working on their social skills and also learning how to move about in society out in public, right? And so they have lots of social opportunities. They told us all about the game day that they do on Fridays and they play Uno and you should come join us. It's wonderful to hear their experiences. They're also partnered with, not a mentor, but it's a promis pal, that's what they call them. It's an employee from Arlington Memorial that checks in on them. You can find them eating lunch with them, checking in, they see them out in the hallways, how's it going? What skills are you working on? How are you progressing on your goals? And so they have their mentor in the department that they work in, but this pal is just checking on them, making sure that they're on track to accomplish the goals that they have set out. They attend all kinds of Arlington Memorial events, holidays, parties, they're all into it. all kinds of Arlington Memorial events, holidays, parties. They're all into it. They love the social aspect of it. Transportation, I've mentioned before, and of course, the connection to Texas workforce for other opportunities outside of hospital. So the rotations are 10 weeks and we have 36 weeks in the school year. So what happens the other six weeks, right? At the beginning of the year, they have three weeks of orientation and all they do is kind of learn the hospital, look at all the departments, what are the activities you're going to do, get an overview of all the opportunities you have because the hospital is pretty intimidating. I mean, if I was in with Caroline, I would have gotten lost. And so they do 10 weeks of the internship and then they have a week off. During that week off, they do different things. They may explore job fairs. They may go out to alley cats to have fun. They may go shopping at Parks Mall. If you were going to get a new outfit for a job interview, what would you get? They do volunteer opportunities at Tarrant County Food Bank. They also go out to lunch and they go shopping. They prepare budgets. Oh, all the things that they do, all the things that they do. So the internship process, how do we get students selected? How are these seven students that we have now selected? So the contact teacher for the vocational adjustment classes in the high school receives orientation related to Project Search. And so they kind of screen their students and then they fill out the selection rubric and then they give it to somebody and say, okay, this student could possibly be one recommended for Project Search. And then the student and the family complete an online application. Out of that, 15 to 20 students get selected for an interview. They have to interview and pass the interview. And the interview, well, you know about interviews. They're pretty intimidating. So they have to sit through the interview with people from Arlington Memorial, Arlington ISD, from the Texas workforce, from MHMR and Quest Employment. I mean, all these people looking at these students, asking them, what are your goals? Why do you want to do this? And so eight to 10 get selected to do this Project Search. And so after that, we have all kinds of regulations getting through HR with Arlington because Arlington Memorial because you have to get a badge to be able to go into all those places that I couldn't go to. What other supports do we have for them? Well, they have six meetings a year, all planning on what workforce skills are you working, employability skills you're working on. They set goals, they check in and Ms. Peterson reports that. She prepares them for them to lead that meeting. It's not all these people working for you only and asking you questions. It's what are you working on and how do you go about communicating those goals and achieving those goals? And after they graduate, if they get a job, when they get a job. Quest Employment works with them to retain their employment. They have 90 days where they follow up with them. They check on the employer. They check on our intern to make sure that everything is working and that things are going well for them. That's what I have for you. What questions may I answer or they can help me answer?
Thank you. Do we have trustees with comments or questions?
I've got to say, the food at Arlington Memorial I hear is really good. So if you go during lunch, you may find them and ask them all kinds of questions. They'll be happy to tell you about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to the action item portion of our agenda. Tonight, we have three action items. Our first item, Item A, is consider and adopt an order authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds, establishing sale parameters, authorizing the execution of a bond purchase agreement and an escrow agreement, and approving an official statement and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Ms. Moss?
President Chapa, Dr. Smith, trustees. Back in December, we brought to the board a resolution for the 2025 bond issuance. This is going to be the last issuance in our 2019 bond program of approximately 163 million. At that time, Mr. Williford came and shared some information with you about refunding as well. We have him here tonight. We also have our bond counsel, Mr. Sam Gill. And I'm going to ask Mr. Williford to come up and just share with you what we, some of the work that we've done over the last several weeks and where we've landed and our sale date and some other information with you.
President Chapa, Dr. Smith, members of the board, a pleasure to be back. Been, I guess, a couple of months nearly, but we're very close to wrapping up the sale of this issue that we discussed in December. And so you have information. In some respects, it looks very similar to what we passed out, but I can provide you with more specifics, hopefully relative to what the outcome will be. As you see, we're planning to issue, as Darla said, the remainder of the authorization, which is 163.5 million. We'll structure that on a 25-year repayment. I will tell you that given the tax rate and, and we model and, and our goal is to stay within, but get close to desired INS tax rate, we're going to be able to retire over $20 million of principal in each of the first two years versus just having level payments from the outset. And that alone is going to save, as we've measured it, somewhere around $30 million of future interest cost if that principal had been retired on a more level manner. Right now, we updated just today, it looks like the new money portion would come in somewhere around 4%. And that's all dependent on what the market does between now and next week when we plan the price. Also, as Darla mentioned and as we discussed in December, you have an opportunity to refund all or part of those three issues, the 15, 16A and 16B. I can tell you, we were a little bit, not necessarily nervous, but apprehensive in that as, after the first of the year, rates started upward and I wasn't sure that the refunding would hold. I've got a page and shows what interest rates, municipal rates have done literally since last December. But recently, although they ran up, they've dropped and even today, yesterday and today, pretty significant decreases. So that the refunding really does make sense and will offer opportunity for some significant savings. Right now, we're looking at refunding approximately 216 million out of those three issues in conjunction with just outright refinancing the district, kind of like what you've done over the past few years, using excess INS money toward principal defeasance. We're going to contribute $30 million of excess INS funds toward the refunding. What that does is inflate the annual savings, the same as if you were paying down principal outright. It's just it works together. Right now, again, based on where interest rates are and hopefully will hold, it looks like with the contribution, the annual debt service savings would be around $4 million per year. That'll be out through 2035 and a little bit of a decrease through 2036 and '07. That would total around $48, $49 million and very significant. We've measured it that if we hadn't made the 30 million or used that, the annual savings would be about a million 250. So you can see the big difference in using that. The, what you have before you tonight is the order, which will authorize sale and establish the parameters delegate to Dr. Smith or Darla, the ability to approve pricing. We are planning to price on February 11th, next Tuesday. In fact, Darla and other representatives, representatives of the district will be coming to our office along with some representatives of Seibert, the senior managing underwriter. And so it'll be a live pricing Tuesday morning and hopefully wrap up relatively early. You can see the goals involved as Darla mentioned, Sam Gill with McCall prepared all the legal documents and so on. And then you see the underwriting group that we talked about back at the prior meeting with Seibert leading. This is what I'd mentioned a while ago. This is the Municipal Market Data Index. Like I said, it goes all the way back to December of '23 that we picked it up, but we've got a kind of a blow up that goes back to November 1st, right before the presidential election. And you'll see there was a spike in rates and then rates dropped down. But then when you get to right around the mid, part of December, rates started escalating and in particular after the 1st of January. But you can see they had dropped. And when we ran this just the other day, the 20-year index was 3.82%. 10-year, 3.07. Today, those have declined to where the 20-year is 3.69. So about another 13 basis point reduction and the 10-year portion is down to 2.89, so nearly 20. So hopefully that type trend or condition will stay in place until and through next Tuesday and we can have a very successful pricing. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none?
I actually, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson?
Could you go back at the very beginning? You said something about $30 million we have saved. Can you put that in simple terms for me?
Okay. I think the, the first 30 million I referenced was typically if, if we were just issuing new money debt, we'd have the payments stretched out over that 25-year timeframe where they were equal every year. Well, the tax rate capacity we have, we're going to be able to move 20 million of principal for the first two years up, actually nearly 50 million, and retire that much principal in years one and two. And so being able to do that cuts what otherwise would have been interest costs that would have been incurred if it had been structured on a level manner.
Okay. And that number again that you saved?
That, that would be around 30 million. We measured just the difference in the structure by having that accelerated principal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any other trustees with comments or questions? Seeing none. Thank you. We'll move, we're not moving on, but we do need to take action on this. Do I have a motion to approve the order authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax bonds, establishing sale parameters, authorizing the execution of a bond purchase agreement and an escrow agreement, approving the official statement and enacting other provisions relating to the subject?
So move.
Have a motion from Mr. Wilbanks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Richardson. We'll give it to her on the tie. Trustees, let's All trustees voting in the affirmative, seven to zero. The motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on now to Action Item B, Consider Targeted Improvement Plans for Comprehensive Support Campus. Dr. Smith?
I'd like to invite Mr. Jared Zahn and Dr. Morales, Claudia Morales, up tonight. They're going to give you an overview of our targeted improvement plans for comprehensive support.
All right. President Chapa, Dr. Smith, members of the board, thank you for letting me present tonight on the, give you a little update on our targeted improvement plans. And I want to thank Dr. Morales for being here as well as back up over here to answer any questions we have once we get to the discussion part or anything in the executive director area of the work. So. All right. Our purpose tonight is first of all, just to provide an overview of required interventions we have based on federal accountability and then really just to show you guys how targeted improvement plans are implemented and supported and then to get approval by the board for targeted improvement plans because that's one of the requirements. All right. So accountability, I know we, Dr. Lopez was up here talking about that. That's not my expertise, but I wanted to do a quick reminder. I don't think we need it, that state accountability overall ratings have been delayed, right? We do not have those ratings. So typically when we're up here talking about accountability, we're talking about state accountability. We don't talk that much about federal, but the interventions and the work we're talking about tonight are a result of federal accountability. And we're talking about our campuses that received a comprehensive support label from federal accountability and those are the ones who have targeted improvement plans. I just want to be very clear that it's federal and not state accountability. And then these are the list of the interventions that are required for any campus that has to implement a targeted improvement plan. The DCSI right there, District Coordinator of School Improvement, that's the TEA's name for my position. In Arlington ISD, I'm the Director of School Improvement, but the DCSI is what you see in TA language or any legal documents like that. And part of that is for me to be involved with stakeholders in development of an ESF-aligned targeted improvement plan. You heard Dr. Beal mention the ESF framework of alignment to the leader, me, earlier. I know some of you guys are familiar with the ESF framework, but our targeted improvement plans are all embedded in that. Our campuses all complete an ESF diagnostic. If they, if they haven't had one, they have one completed this year. If they have already had one that is within the last three years, then they can use a prior ESF diagnostic. And then all tips, as we mentioned, are board approved. Myself and campus leadership team collect evidence of implementation and progress of their targeted improvement plans throughout the year. So we don't just, you know, develop a targeted improvement plan and move on. We monitor and implement them throughout the year. Executive directors help with that as well. And then we do have submissions and meetings with Region 11 and TEA. And we're going to get to a little later in the presentation, some revised calendars for TEA. They revised some of these intervention calendars. And like the submissions this year, the submission for the tips isn't actually until February 28th when we send those to TEA. And then we do a progress submission in June 20th. So that's quite a bit different if you remember on years past from what those look like. So just letting you know, we do have those meetings and check-ins with them, but that's what they look like this year. So if you're not familiar with a targeted improvement plan and what that is, I know y'all hear about campus improvement plans a lot, but targeted improvement plans are a little bit different. They are based on the ESF framework, which we have highlighted over there in that graphic, but they're really based on campus systems that support school achievement. And how do we improve these systems? Similar to how Karen, Principal Hicks, talked about, I want to get systems in place so when I'm not here, these things continue, right? We want to implement and improve key systems on these campuses that support student achievement. And when you look at the graphic over there, they outline the five levers of the effective school framework. And those are, when you look, when you look at the outside, I'm realizing here, as you get older, right? Reading glasses might be beneficial for me, looking, looking at this screen right here. But at the, at the outside of the circle, you, you know, you have strong school leadership and planning because that's, yeah, thank you, David. That, that is, that is the foundation. And then you have strategic planning. You have positive school culture. You have high-quality instructional materials and all those lead to effective instruction, right? With those levers, those are the buckets that the state put together the ESF framework to have a common language of best practices across the state. So I can collaborate with a campus from Houston or Austin or anywhere else who's working on 1.1, strong school leadership and planning is the example down there. And we can talk about a new principle, how they're doing that, how are they implementing those systems on their campus? So that's what the, what the targeted improvement plan is. It really digs into implementing and developing those strong systems at your campus. And they're all based on the ESF framework. So now really, what does that look like here though, right? What does it look like once a, once a principal says they have to develop a tip, once they write a targeted improvement, if I say tip, that's what our abbreviation for it all the time. So I wanted this to just really be able to walk y'all through a little bit here. What does it look like? So when you look up there, the, the number one where it says self-assess and ESF diagnostic, I talked a little bit about the ESF diagnostic already, but this is typically like, I would say, summer work for principals after the school year's over. They're naturally doing this anyways. They're leaders. They're reflecting on what progress did we make? What are our deficits? What are the areas we need to move forward and grow on? And they're writing action plans around that. So they're doing that reflection during the summer. And if they had an ESF diagnostic, they're going to look at the results of that to see, what did that say? Align to the ESF framework? What are key systems that we could support? What are best practices that we need to improve upon? And once they have that, then number two for us in Arlington is really, that's in July. We start at the beginning of the school year because an improvement plan, we need all year, right? We, we don't, we don't start improvement plans in February. We start improvement plans at the beginning of the school year and implement. So they write their, their targeted improvement plan in July. They start working on that. We offer work sessions and principals bring their leadership team members. They work with their executive director, with myself. They get it started. They take it back to their campus. They get input there and they develop their targeted improvement plan. Then three and four, really work together and that's just a very common continuous improvement cycle. You probably see in the business world, you see here, but we break it into three cycles and the principals set interim targets for each cycle, specific actions for each cycle, and then work on implementation. And then during those cycles, they monitor, are we making progress? Are we not? What support do we need? Executive directors, myself, go out. We, we Executive directors, myself, go out. We collaborate with the principals. We walk, we look at evidence of implementation. And then we, that's also an opportunity for us to check in. Are there barriers? Is there support you need from the district? Anything that we can do to help continue the implementation moving forward? And at the end of each cycle, they then look, did we hit that interim target? Did we not? They make adjustments. They plan new action steps, and they move forward. And then that gets them to the end of the year where they hit, did they hit their big targets? So that's just the kind of continuous improvement cycle we look at, that they implement year-round on moving forward with their targeted improvement plan. All right, now this is really, I wanted to drop this in here just to see a celebration. And so you would see the difference of the 14 campuses we had who had, who have a targeted improvement plan, who are currently identified as comprehensive support. On the left, those 11 campuses, they were actually identified for comprehensive support last year. Was their first when they were identified. And comprehensive support is a two-year label by the federal government. So you're in it for two years no matter what. And all 11 of those campuses that were identified last year, this year were identified as comprehensive progress. That means they met the state's measure to move out of comprehensive support. They just have to do it one more year. So I just wanted to acknowledge the work of our campus leaders and our principals and our teachers, their work with their targeted improvement plans, and the many other things they did to improve their campus that all 11 of them are on their way out of comprehensive support. So I just wanted y'all to see that part. That was a huge celebration for them. And then the three on the right, those are the only three we had newly identified this year. And they're just starting the school, the targeted improvement plan process. But we're seeing good implementation and good data at their campuses that they're moving forward and are on that track as well. And then considering these are campuses that were given a comprehensive support label, they need different support than every campus. So I tried to outline a few of the supports they get here that aren't common to every campus. So we have instructional facilitators within the Office of School Leadership, and they go out and provide differentiated support with campuses based on principal-identified needs. It's not us going out saying, you need to work on this. The instructional facilitators, the executive directors collaborate with them. And those instructional facilitators provide direct support in the campus with those campus leadership teams. And then our curriculum instruction department has started doing the same thing within math and reading this semester. They are meeting and providing support at identified campuses after meeting with the principal to find out, okay, where's your hotspots? How can we support? How can we be out in the work with you and help move that forward? The, all these campuses, the campuses do have funds to help support implementation of their tip. There's a lot of discretion on the principal because a lot of the tips look different, as long as it's supporting improvement student outcomes. But that funding is coming through the ESF grant, and that ESF grant is also what is, was supporting Leader and Me. So it provided for the Leader and Me implementation, but it also has discretionary budget on the side that helps them move forward other initiatives. And then we do have at Sam Houston, we have two positions. We have a Title I CCMR facilitator position and a CCMR clerk that are just helping Sam Houston with their CCMR implementation. And CCMR is just blowing up at Sam Houston. They're doing a great job. And those staff members are not at other campuses, are at Sam Houston, are direct support there. And then lastly, executive directors like Dr. Morales right here and myself and the other executive directors, we, we work directly with all of these campuses and planning their targeted improvement plans and walking the campus with them, looking at implementation, helping collaborate, problem solve, provide them work time to work on these things during the school day and just let them, help them try to be side-by-side in the work with them and in meeting their TA requirements and all those things. All right, now this one, really, I just, I put in here because I wanted you to know, why, if you've been on, familiar with when you've seen tip things, why are we presenting these to you in February, right? Typically, we've presented these to you in October, along, right along with the campus improvement plans. That's when you would think, right, at the beginning of the year. But I hinted at earlier, TA revised their whole calendar this year. And the board window for approval didn't even start till December. And we didn't even have a, an example of what, they revised the tip template also. We didn't even have an example of what that was going to look like until December. So our campuses had already started the work, but we had to see, put it in TA format to be able to give it to y'all for board approval. We couldn't come before board approval before that. So I just wanted you to know, it wasn't us just waiting to give it to you. Now, we're following this new intervention calendar and meeting that TA requirement. But also just wanted to highlight that our, we didn't wait on TA's timeline or calendar. We started the work in July. And our principals did a great job of saying, okay, let's, we're doing an improvement plan. Let's start it now. Let's start at the beginning of the year, get it going, and they've done a great job with it. And then here, I just wanted to take a second to give you a look and highlight just a few of the things that are taking place on some of our campuses. We do have 14 campuses doing this. I didn't put 14 pictures up there, but I just picked, picked a few. When we go out, when we go out for visits, we look at artifacts of evidence. We look to see the work in action. The first picture there is Pope Elementary. We have a new principal over there. And they've done a great job with some just reset, rebranding the school, updating their branding, new mission and vision, and getting that, getting that good energy over there at Pope Elementary. And the picture in the middle there is Workman Junior High. That's one of their Leader and Me trainings. You heard them talk about. They're doing great work in that area. Peach Elementary, this is a great process Isha had told me about where they have, this is not a once, Peach Elementary family orientation beginning of the year. They have it anytime they have new families enroll now with the high mobility rate over there and families coming in and kids showing up. How do we do school here? It looks different here than it did somewhere else. How do we orient families to, when does school start? When do we need them dropped off? What are the expectations? How do I, what do you want me to do with my kids? So they have a ILT rotation sign up, and they do orientation with new parents when they come in every time. It's awesome to hear her talk about it. Goodman Elementary is down there on the, on the bottom. This is their teachers participating in some professional learning regarding their instruction. And then the big soccer goal right there with Texans right there is pretty obvious. That's Sam Houston High School, but that is their Texans for Life. That's their goal. Soccer balls all over. That's them highlighting their students who've already received their CCMR point. They're just celebrating their kids. They have up on one of the locker banks. I know we don't use lockers anymore, right? Lockers just sit there in the school. But it's a great celebration of their kids as they, as they get their CCMR point. They get, they get up there. They usually will take a picture with their CCMR specialist and just celebrate the kids and highlight them. So those are just a snapshot of the few of the things taking, taking place and related to their targeted improvement plans. But just wanted to make sure y'all could see those. And that's all I have. Any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Zahn. Mr. Mike?
Yes, thank you so much. Sir, thank you for this presentation. Very informative, very helpful. What I've noticed is there are strong correlation between the Leader and Me program and this ESF framework. What you noted on slide seven, the 11 schools that are identified as comprehensive progress, they all have participation in Leader and Me. And I think on the right, Workman is also identified as one as well. Are there any plans or any future plans to, I guess, put in for another grant? I assume that's a T grant, correct?
Yeah, it is a grant through the state. Yes, sir.
Are there, are there any plans to somehow put Crouch or Foster into the same program?
I wouldn't say there, there's not an immediate plan for that. Those are open for discussion with any of our campuses right now, honestly. We're, you're right, there is a direct correlation for them because all of those campuses who, who received this grant, it is a school improvement grant. So when I told you they were all identified as comprehensive support last year, that's how they got the grant because they were all able to apply. Now, that same grant is not available this year. And TA has changed their school improvement grants where Leader and Me isn't an option for that. But are there other funding options and are there other ways we might could get those campuses connected with Leader and Me? If we think of, then you're right, that's definitely something worth, worth looking into. But I would highlight that the camp, these campuses that showed the growth, they showed the growth before implementing Leader and Me. And I'm not discrediting, but I just want to, I want to acknowledge the work at the campus that they, they showed the growth when they got the results this year, right? Based on last year's performance, and they've been identified as comprehensive progress. So they did a great, I think this is going to accelerate their movement. And I do think it's great, but I just want to acknowledge that they'd accomplished this prior to that work.
I did want to let Dr. Buell add on to that if she'd like. She's helping us with the Leader and Me component there and helped with that grant.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to jump in and say that we really have focused on sustainability because I think that's a really important part of this. We've got to think beyond two years and how do we sustain for the campuses that are implementing, but also for others that potentially may say, you know what, this would be a great fit for our campus as well. Jared and I just sat in a meeting with them yesterday to start talking about what would that look like and understand what the cost is. And they also have some potential grants that they can connect us with. So I did want to say we are in discussion with that and are looking for what those funding options might be for campuses beyond the 12, should we decide to go that direction. So, yes.
Love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, President Chapa and Jared. Thank you again for this presentation. And thank you for addressing my burning question, why February?
Right.
It just seems like asking us to approve something when we're on the downhill slide into the next STAR exam is a little too late for us to provide input. But can you, so going forward, my question is, it will always be that December-November timeframe for when this comes to the board?
I will say, I will never commit to what TA is going to give us, right? As, I mean, fair, right? That we know, right, we know, and we don't always have a lot of advance note. I will tell you, they're, I don't know if you want me to over-answer. They're, they've changed their model to where that, what they're trying to do is at the beginning of the school year, when you have received a federal identification, that you would complete an ESF diagnostic that year. So if you're not familiar with an ESF diagnostic, that's when Region 11 comes in and they spend a day at your campus, and they really use the ESF framework just to kind of give you like a physical and say, okay, where are you on each of these indicators? And it's an outside perspective. It's a good, it's a good experience and gives you good input from somebody who's not Arlington, right? Looking at it with a fresh set of eyes. But I'm just trying to explain TA's mindset. So they, they want you to go through that. Then once you have that, then, which it takes them a while. I mean, the school year's got to get going. They got to get out. Then you got to get the results back. Then they've added a superintendent's meeting where they, they meet with the superintendent, which is new. And then after that, that which, which didn't happen until I think it was the Friday before Thanksgiving break when we met with them. And then after that, you would develop your tip based on the ESF diagnostic. So I understand where they're coming from, but that, it wastes a lot of time. If like our campuses had already, already had their ESF diagnostic, we weren't waiting on that. We knew what we needed to do in June and July. So even if they keep a calendar like this, our plan would still be to go ahead and start the work again in June or July. And we're going to develop, we're still going to develop a targeted improvement plan. Our principals are still going to identify the one or two areas they want to work on and implement. And then when TA's requirements come through, we're going to adapt our plan to meet their requirements. So we're, we're going to exceed their requirements, is what I'm saying. We're going to meet their requirements, but we are at their mercy of when can we bring it to the board? Because I checked about that. Can we bring it early, earlier than that? They should know we had to wait until their window on the calendar. So, so I don't know what it'll look like next year, if it'll be the same or if they're going to have feedback on this year's calendar and go, oh, maybe we need to rethink not having a improvement plan due till February 28th.
Well, the important thing is you're doing the work regardless of when we approve it, you're doing the work.
Right.
Part of that, my final question, the diagnostic process with Regional 11, does that include a root cause analysis?
I wouldn't say no. No, I wouldn't say it is a root cause analysis. It comes, they, they really just walk through, they let you submit artifacts. They walk through, spend a day at the campus, and they look through and see where are you at on each of those? Really, when you break down into each of the key practices, success criteria, where are you in each of those?
It's focused on.
Right. And then you take that back and say, okay, if we were low in 5.3 or 1.1, okay, then you have to do that root cause to say, was it just not there today? Or did they just not see it because of meeting? Or we don't, we're not doing that. We think we're doing that. And, and it's not, and it's not there. So no, it doesn't have that level of root. You have to take that back afterwards and, and dig into it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, Mr. Zahn. Thank you, Dr. Morales. Very quick question, hopefully, simple explanation. I, I love the celebration of the campus, campuses identified for comprehensive. They're all, they're all exited from that. And then as far as the three campuses that we have under the comprehensive identified, what proactive measures do we take as a district to kind of keep, anticipate campuses that are going to meet that threshold? Because I know it's a two-year process, and I'm just curious if those three camp, if we, if we saw this coming and what, what measures are in place for us to help, help our campuses from going into targeted improvement plans?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the perfect answer for that. We had those proactive systems in place. There's, there's a lot to that. I'm trying to think of a concise way to answer them. And ultimately, this is related to domain three of our state accountability. So a way to be proactive is for us to be watchful of, Dr. Lopez's department does a great job of giving us data related to each of the domains after each of our district and our assessments that we have. So we definitely can look at that, and, and our principals do look at that and use that to try to close gaps and to try to, so that's the domain we really, we do have to focus on to watch for that. But then I will say that when I say a little bit complicated is this is federal accountability. So it's related to all the schools in the state. So without knowing how everybody else in the state is, performs,
Right.
that you don't really know if you're, what part of the threshold you're going to fall in, right? I mean, overall, you, you can see if you're, the, the most important thing is are we improving in domain three, right? I mean, that's a very simple way. Are we growing our domain three performance? If we're moving forward in domain three, we're moving in the right direction, right? If we're moving backwards in domain three, that's not good. But as far as, but I'm saying, that's what makes a little bit of, I would think Dr. Lopez would answer that way better than me. Hard to accurately predict where you're going to fall in the state because we don't know where everybody else in the state is going to fall in domain three.
Okay. I was mainly curious about like, can, just being preventative. Like, we, we don't want to wait till STAR scores. We don't want to wait till our official domain three. I was, I was just curious what measures are being taken to catch the campuses early enough to where, to where they don't have to be campus improvement?
Yes.
Or targeted improvement?
Yes, that's a great question. So some of the additional support that they get, we have instructional facilitators who are assigned to these campuses to provide additional support. So they support in building capacity in our teachers. And they support in working side-by-side with instructional leadership team and the principal to ensure that they're continued to move district initiatives and campus goals. And to your earlier question, trustee Wilbanks, they also work on helping them with their problem of practice and do a root cause analysis. So they do provide that additional support to campuses. We also partner with CNI, who also send their coordinators out there. And they build capacity in teachers with any content area that's a hotspot for those campuses. And so principals will identify, we have a hotspot in third grade reading. And so CNI will go out there, they will send their coordinators, and they will partner and build capacity in those teachers. So that way we can ensure we have those preventative measures and so that we don't wait until STAR to, to issue the support, to offer the support.
Awesome. I'm just glad we're keeping our finger on the pulse and providing support so that we can reduce the number of campuses that, that meet the threshold for the two-year comprehensive plan. Thank y'all.
And then that one more thing that we also do as executive directors, we, we are there on a weekly basis or every two weeks. So they, they are priority campuses for us as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both.
All right. Any further comments or questions from trustees? All right. We, this is an action item, so we will take a vote. I will at this time ask a motion, for a motion to approve our targeted improvement plans for comprehensive support campuses. Have a motion from Mr. Mike. Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a second from Mr. Wilbanks. Trustees, let's vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative seven to zero, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to action item C, consider order of election for school board elections. Dr. Smith? Dr. Smith?
Sorry, trustees, I just flipped the wrong page, and I don't have it in front of me. I believe the order of election is before you tonight for your consideration for the February 2025, or excuse me, May 2025 election for your consideration this evening.
Are there any comments or questions from trustees? Do I have a motion to approve the order of election for school board for May 2025 as presented? I have a motion from Ms. Richardson. Do I have a second? I have a second for Ms. McMurro. Trustees, let's vote. The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. The order of election is approved. We'll now move on to our consent agenda for tonight. Are there any items that trustees wish to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to vote on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion from Ms. Fowler. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Mr. Wilbanks. We'll now move on to vote on the consent agenda. All trustees voting in the affirmative seven to zero, the consent agenda carries. We have no speakers registered for non-agenda forum tonight, so we will move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, President Chapa, members of the board. There's a ton going on in the district as we move into February, and I'd like to share a few highlights in the report this month. Obviously, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this one. I was going to highlight marketing and engagement, but you spent an hour in our workshop on marketing and engagement this evening. So I wanted to make sure we put one quick plug in that you heard Anita and team talk about the surveys that are currently open out there. We would encourage all of our trustees to participate in the surveys and encourage you to make sure your networks of people in our community participate in those surveys as well. That survey information will help us make a great plan for the upcoming year. For the ninth year in a row, seventh graders from Young Junior High School did more than just learn about Martin Luther King Junior School and enjoy the Monday off. They put MLK's legacy into action across Arlington. They cleaned parks, volunteered at local churches, read books to students at Reminzi Elementary, and volunteered at Mission Arlington. The school even partnered with local organization Hager's Heart, creating bracelets and writing heartfelt letters for care boxes that support victims of domestic violence. We're proud of these students and inspired by their service to our community. Last week, Wimbis World Language Academy had their annual Lunar New Year celebration. This year marks the Year of the Snake, and once again, the students were fully, fully embraced the theme. They wore red clothing, paraded through the hallways, and, and made themselves memorable that day, having a wonderful time celebrating the diverse cultures at Wimbis Elementary. You know, pre-K is a big priority for Arlington ISD, and our early childhood learning team goes all out to not only help three- and four-year-olds learn, but to also help their parents. Last Saturday, they held a workshop for parents to help them better understand their children's emotions and to help them develop a lifelong, a lifelong love of learning. They're truly an outstanding team doing great work for each and every one of our students. Finally, before I wrap up this evening, I want to recognize another outstanding group of employees in the Arlington Independent School District. This week is National School Counseling Week. I want to take a moment to highlight our amazing school counselors that we have throughout our school district. They truly deserve more than just a week to be recognized for all the hard work and support they provide for our students each and every day. They're making a positive impact for them in, in, in thousands of kids' lives here in Arlington, and we're so grateful for the work that they do. So as we close this, make sure you thank a counselor at the end of this week in Arlington ISD. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll move on to trustee reports. Do any trustees have comments or reports tonight? Okay. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, President Chapa. Very briefly, I just wanted to share with any community members or staff that are watching this evening. I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of legislative happenings at the state level. Arlington ISD adopted a legislative agenda. It's available on our website. A lot of us are sharing it, you know, on social media and different platforms. And I just wanted to say, things are going very quickly, and we're doing a lot at the board level to advocate and make sure we're keeping abreast of all of the quick, quick movement taking place in Austin. But we do invite our community to watch with us what's happening and advocate and communicate with our representatives and senators to represent us on the issues that are important to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. We'll move on to the secretary's report. Ms. Richardson, do we have any items to consider this evening?
We do not.
Okay. All right, we are not closing out tonight. We do have a Level Four grievance hearing. It's a appeal. So at this time, it is 9:22. The board will go into closed session for the Level Four grievance hearing under the authority of Texas Government Code Sections 551.0821 and 551.071. For the purposes of hearing complaint in which the board of trustees must discuss personally identifiable information about a student in order to deliberate, we'll now move into closed. It is now 12:25 PM on February 7th, 25, 12:25 AM on February, I got the 7th right. February 7th, 2025, the board did not take any vote or other action in closed meeting. Having heard the complaint of Mr. Skierski, the board will, under board policy FNG Local, make a decision at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. It's 12:25. This meeting is adjourned.